I'd like to call the Lake Mills City Council to order for November 7th, 2017. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Knippel? Okay. And I think, I believe Mr. Knippel is in the musical at the high school and is slightly busy at this moment, so we understand him not being able to be with us tonight. And I'd like to encourage everybody in town to go see the musical at the high school this weekend. Okay. Corrections and approval of the City Council minutes of October 17th, 2017. Do I have a motion to that effect?
We'll move.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, call the question, call the roll. Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. Okay. Moving us to item number four, correspondence. Does anyone want to start with something that they would like to bring to the council's attention or review for the council?
I've got one thing. I noticed over the past few weeks that we've had a lot of conversation on social media about the direction changes on the Tyranina Road heading from McDonald's West. Just wanted to let everybody know that that was a county and state-driven item and the city wasn't even notified it was going to happen, so if you, if you have any issues, you can bring them up to us and we can take them to the county or you can go straight to the county if you have any issues with it. But know that they have done some directional study there for traffic flow and they've actually changed the left turn lane heading west on Tyranina Park. They've changed that to a straight through and a left-hand turn and the right-hand turn is right-hand turn only. And the other piece of information is the green light heading east actually triggers first, so it gives those folks heading west more, more time to get the traffic through there. So just be careful to, and know that when you're heading towards the market, towards Culvers, towards BP, towards QuickTrip, if you're going straight, you have to be in that center lane now and you can't be in the right-hand lane. That's all I have.
Thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention. So, and it's not you, it's the road changed, okay? So if you get up there and you think, "I didn't know it was like this," you're right, it wasn't. Okay. All right. Anybody else have any other correspondence or something they want to bring up to the Seeing none, we'll move on to questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the public hearing. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. If there's someone who'd like to speak to the comment, to the council during public comment, you can come up to the podium at this time.
Good evening, you guys. My name is Hope Osteich and I live at W. 8357 Cedar Lane in the town of Lake Mills. I also serve as the town chairman of the town of Lake Mills and I would like to speak to you tonight about the item that is on your agenda, mainly Clean Boats, Clean Waters, the program that you guys have been involved in in the last two years. The town has been involved in this program for, I believe, three years. We are very fortunate in our community to have the services of Ms. Patricia Cicero as our land conservation professional who specializes in lakes. Patricia has been the driving force of Clean Boats, Clean Waters. She has recently updated both of our grants for both municipalities. The town of Lake Mills is assuming the responsibility of being the fiduciary for those grants. We do all the payroll for those people that are employed doing the boat inspections. Our town clerk handles all of the details with that. Patricia has done all of the training for the three employees that we had this last year. She will give you an update of all of the different findings that she has. I am speaking to you earlier because I need to leave because we have another meeting tonight. I'm just really proud of the work that we have done in Clean Boats, Clean Waters. I think it's not really measurable how much good this has done, but this is certainly a boots-on-the-ground effort that is being provided to us through the DNR and it is really our action that puts it to work. So I'm really proud of the work that we have done. I, again, I don't know how we measure it, but we certainly have had a great deal of cooperation. We have had good success with the employees that we have had. We asked them to do a pretty tough task, which is make basically cold calls on people who are entering our waters at our various boat launches. When they approach these boaters, mixed reactions come about, but a lot of information is gathered. It is then put into a database and that is really important on tracking what's going on with invasive species. Again, I encourage you to approve this for another year. We'll do the legwork. I do want to credit Patricia for all of the training. The other thing I wanted to say is we had two really great employees that came back to us this year. We had three employees. One of, two of them have agreed to come back next year and so that's a real relief for us because we really basically have them already trained in the, in the system and we'll be probably seeking a couple other employees so that we can fill out this program. But that's really encouraging that we don't have to struggle with personnel this year. So I encourage you to support that. I also wanted to bring up tonight something that we're going to be looking at as a township. The Rock Lake Improvement Association has been commanding the revision of the 10-year lake plan and they have come up with recommendations. The document I have tonight is dated October 19th and it has a number of different recommendations that are coming forward that will be included in our next 10-year lake plan. I think this is real important for you guys to look at. It's important for us as a town to look at because there are many goals set there that have town and city influence and I think it would be, prove you all to study this carefully. They had a meeting and we just discussed this in our joint Rock Lake Committee. It was not very well attended. I believe they had maybe 15 participants in the summary meeting. I'm sure there's more interest in the lake than that, but I would like to encourage you guys to look over these draft recommendations. Here again, Patricia has been the leader of this advisory group, providing them over the last 18 months with all kinds of information so that they can form these recommendations. This is going to be winnowed down again by the Rock Lake Improvement Association, but then it will be a standing document that we will work from for the next 10 years, going forward on applying for other grants or other things. So I really encourage you to take a good, long look at this. Winter months are here now. We may have a little more time to work on these legislative things. So thank you very much. I encourage your support of Clean Boats and Clean Waters. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, Hope, and thank you for the work you and your committee is, are doing, so.
You're welcome.
We will discuss this more on the agenda item. Okay. Anyone else want to speak at the, at this time? Okay. Seeing none. Okay. We'll close the, let's see, the public comment section of the agenda and move on to the city manager's report. Now, Steve?
I just provided the budgets for September capital and general fund and the letter that I also distributed tonight is attached, so other than that I have nothing else. Unless you have any questions?
Anybody have questions for Steve tonight?
Have you received the, let's see, we're using sand right now for the roads, right? For ice and so on? Well, or salt?
We just saw.
Are we also using that other stuff?
Brine.
The brine?
I, we've been moving towards it. I don't know if we'll be prepared this year or not yet. There was, we've been working with the county and they thought they'd have that shop up here ready to go and it's not yet. So they're building a satellite out there in the end of Oasis.
Oh, is that what that's for?
Anything else with that? Mr. Fritsch?
Do we have the salt needed or are we getting it? There's a lot of.
We're required to order salt way in advance, so yeah, it's been done a long time already. Okay.
So we're, we're good to go unless we get an exorbitant amount of snow, so in which case everybody in the state of Wisconsin will be in the same situation we are. So let's hope not. Anybody else have something for Steve? Clarification, comment, anything? Seeing none, we'll move on. Acceptance of the minutes of the Housing Authority of July 25th, 2017. Those have been received and will be put on file. Okay. And item eight, council business, board and committee appointments. Number one, extraterritorial zoning committee appointment. The reason this is on our agenda is that we believe we may have a need for the committee and so in, in order to be ready if, in case we need to have that committee brought back to life, right now it's been pretty quiet and non-existent for a long time, right, Steve? Like years?
I think the last time they met was 2011.
Okay, well, maybe not as long as I was thinking, but still, that's about six years. So we are, we have three members from the city on that committee and three members from the township on that committee and I have three appointments for that committee tonight for the council to approve. It's, I'd like to put the name of Greg Coots, Steve Holman, and Wayne Magnussen to the council for approval on the extratorior, territorial, I have more trouble with that, zoning committee, so if there's a motion for that.
I'll make the motion to approve those three names.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Anybody want to say anything?
Those are all three members of the.
Planning.
Planning Commission.
Yeah. They have to be a member of the Planning Commission, I believe. Have any of them served on the extraterritorial committee in the past?
Steve and Wayne had both.
Okay. So, okay. Call the roll, please. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Who?
Fritsch?
I.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. Okay, so thank you to those four, those three people for offering to serve. Okay. City manager appointments, handed to Steve on this one.
I made the appointments to the Housing Authority and Mary Peschel resigned her position on that board and so I'm appointing Margaret Belk.
And there is no approval by the council. Thank you for notifying us. Okay. Miscellaneous licenses, tavern operator licenses. Let's see, let me just check from, with the council. How would you like to handle these licenses that are in front of us tonight? Do you want to do them one at a time?
I think that would probably be best.
Okay. Would you read the first name, please, Mr.? Kelly Killian? Okay. Let's, I have to bring it back up here. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the tavern operator license for Kelly Killian.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? We don't have discussion on, or do we? We can, but we don't. Okay. So is there anything else? Otherwise we can call the roll on that. Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. Okay. Moving us to the next name. Alex Gray. Is there a motion to approve Alex Gray?
I'll make the motion to approve the tavern operator license for Alex Gray.
Second.
Any other comments or questions on that license? Seeing none, call the question. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. Okay. Moving on to the next person. Kathryn Fagan.
I will make the motion to approve the tavern operator license for Kathryn Fagan.
Second. Okay. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. Okay. Moving on to our next applicant, Rebecca Schottliff. Is there a motion to approve the tavern operator's license for Rebecca Schottliff?
I move that we not approve the license and that we ask the city clerk to state that the reason is that the person doesn't meet the qualifications under the statutes.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second and discussion? Seeing none, call the question. Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. Moving on to our next applicant. Would you read that name? Jamie Glapa. Okay. Is there a motion to approve a tavern operator's license for Jamie Glapa?
I move that we not, that we not approve the license for this applicant on the same grounds that the applicant doesn't meet the requirements under the state statutes and that the clerk inform the applicant.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to not approve. Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, call the question. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
No.
Motion passed, four one. Okay, and that moves us on to item number two, tavern operator's license, which is currently tabled for Jonathan Hamilton. First, we need to remove it from the table and if someone would like to make a motion to do that, then we could.
I move that we remove the application from the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to remove Jonathan Hamilton's application from the table. Call the roll on that. Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. Okay. That brings the application for Jonathan Hamilton to our council and what is the pleasure of the council on this now that it's back on the table?
I'm making a motion to approve the tavern operator license for Jonathan Hamilton.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion to approve and second, any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. Okay, so that has been approved. And that moves us to the public hearing for 2018's general budget. Let's see, so I guess I just moved that the public hearing is open and anybody who's in the, in the audience who would like to speak pro con questions regarding our budget for 2018, the general budget, can come up to the podium and ask questions or whatever is the pleasure of the audience. Would anyone like to, to speak on the budget? Seeing no one, I will move the budget hearing be closed and we move to ordinance 1180A, 2018 general fund budget, third reading.
Ordinance 1180A, 2018 general government budget and tax levy ordinance.
Okay. So any comments, questions before we, or you can make a motion to approve the budget?
I move that we adopt ordinance 1180A, 2018 general fund budget.
Motion to adopt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, I have a tie. Okay, I'm going to give it to Steve. Steve, you won that one. Okay. Okay. So we have.
Steve has a question.
Oh, Steve has a, oh, that Steve has a question. Yes, sir.
I don't have a question.
Okay, what's your quest, what's your concern?
I want to note that the budget rate dropped 3.35 percent to a finished budget.
Okay.
Which means that it was technically then, it still ended up being a $6.04 increase because your house value increased.
Ah, but technically the taxes went, the, how do you say that?
The tax levy went up.
The levy rate went up, but the.
Levy rate went down, but the values went up.
Okay.
Yes. Well, it was a combination of three things, which make taxes a little, go over there. The rate, the levy, and the assessed value. And the assessed value went up, the levy went up, and the rate went down. So the, the assessed value went up much higher than the levy went up. So it had a significant decrease. Lot of new construction, so that made a big difference. But, so the general fund ended up pretty solid. In fact, it went well enough that we qualified for expenditure restraint. Yeah, I didn't think we would, but we did, so.
Can you explain what that means? In a, in layman's terms?
I don't think there is such a thing.
Okay.
It's a, it's a creature of the state. Actually, it's a feature, it's just a state law that creates something, some artificial barrier. And what it does is it says, if you spend less money than, than the inflation rate that's determined by the Department of Administration, you qualify for expenditure restraint dollars.
And that means we get more money from the state?
Yes, it goes up by about $100, $105,000. It all depends on how many other cities qualify because they have a set amount of dollars and so depending on how many cities qualify for it determines how it gets divided up and how much money is available. So we could get anywhere from $80,000 to $150,000 depending on who qualifies. My assumption is this year, the inflation rate set by DOA was 3.2 percent, which is pretty, pretty good. And we were under that, pretty.
Tight.
Quite enough.
Yeah, enough.
And so it went pretty well for us. Actually, our, our debt margin went down and so it looks pretty good. Now, next year it'll probably go up a little bit, but actually next year it will go down significantly because this building will come off the tax roll next year. But then the main street and the Mulberry Street will go on and so quite a bit different. Still, based on, on the information that I've been putting together, I think our debt marginals continue to go down, actually, and our debt will kind of flatten out for general fund, electric and sewer. Actually, electric and sewer will start to go down in 2023. The only one that we're really having problems with is water. There are several.
And that's been.
As you know, we have a lot of mandates that are hitting us pretty hard and revenues just haven't grown like, like we anticipated, so we have, you know, we have lead that we're dealing with and so that was an additional $500,000 we'll have to take on to, to do all the lead replacements and, and you can count all of them because they're all cuts in the street practically.
Yes, we are aware.
We, we got notice that we have radium in the water and we'll have to do something about that, so we're headed to Fitchburg next Wednesday, or next, yeah, next Wednesday. So Wednesday or Thursday? Tuesday. Oh, that's right, it's Tuesday, Tuesday morning. And that'll probably have some cost to us. Water loss, that's why we're doing all the meters. That's why we have the big investment in the meters. That was about $400,000, so those things continue to verge in on us. South Main Street alone for water was $1.5 million in public, you know, infrastructure improvement. So that utility is probably going to have as much debt as, as anything else that's, that has really gone up. So I don't, we'll, we'll probably continue to have issues in, in the water utility for a while. Otherwise, I feel really good about the financial position of the city.
And the water utility has kind of been floating along over the years. I mean, we haven't, all of a sudden we have a lot of things that affect it, which weren't, you know, 10 years ago, we didn't have most of those on our plate.
Yeah, the, the whole story about lead changed. Several of the other things are, have never been an issue before and started to push to the top. Water loss.
Yep.
Became more, more of an issue as our water use started to drop. You know, we've lost some big users like the Fish Hadry in Hamlin and then your water loss, the percentage looks a lot bigger, so then you have to. So, then you have to spend a lot more time and effort to figure out why that's going on.
Right.
So, and surprisingly, there wasn't a lot of water main replacement from... For the first 100 and some years of the utility. So, we have a lot of catch-up in that utility. Most of the other ones have some level of maintenance having occurred over the last 100 years.
Right. Well, that's how it goes. You can't live forever on yesterday, so... But generally speaking, so... Now, that doesn't mean... So, our portion of the tax bill will actually go down a little?
No, it'll go up a little bit.
Oh, because?
About six bucks for the average home.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's our portion. I don't know what the other ones are doing yet.
That was my...
I haven't heard anything.
You haven't heard anything?
No, so I don't know if the school's going up or the county or...
So, the people listening at home and anybody who listens to this at some other time, you'll have to check with those other public entities to find out what their tax rate will do and to figure out what your bill will be.
Yeah, as soon as you get your bill, you'll know what their rates are. They spell them a lot right on the bill. If you want to...
And that's not that far off. It's already the first week of November, so December something.
Yeah, it's about 30 days away.
Yeah, so, time flies. Okay, but we're very happy to be able to present the budget that we're presenting tonight to the citizens of the city. Steve and the council, we've worked hard to keep costs down and try to make everything as fiscally responsible as we could and hope that you appreciate the work. Okay, any other comments on... yes?
For this additional revenue we may be getting from the state, do you have that earmarked for anything yet, or...
That will not come in until 2019 because it's a year behind. So, no, I don't have that earmarked for anything yet.
But I'm sure something will be here for it. Let's hope that it isn't South Main over, going up and over the top, which it could be. But there's a lot of things that could be, right?
Yes.
Good question, thank you for asking that. Any other questions or comments? All right. Call the question on the ordinance.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Moves us to item F on the agenda. The public hearing for the 2018 capital budget is now open. If anyone from the audience would like to speak on that part of the budget, you may do that at this time by going up to the podium. Seeing no one moving in that direction, I will close the public hearing and move to ordinance 1181, the 2018 capital budget, third reading.
Ordinance 1181, 2018 capital budget.
Anybody wish to make a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Comments, questions, explanations of any sort? Nope, seeing none, call the question.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. Okay. On for another year. Moving to item H, discussion decision on the Humane Society contract. Okay, who wants to be the... Steve, are you the speaker on that one?
Um, it can be. The Humane Society is the agency that we've contracted with for years to provide our animal control services. Annually, they provide us a contract that's been attached. It spells out, you know, what they do for how much. And it's pretty consistent what we've received in the past that was within what we had budgeted. And they provided a letter that gave you some information on how they broke the budget out. And I provided a memo with some of the specific services they provide. Are there any questions?
Well, let's get a motion on the floor. And then we'll have Mr. Steve read it. But would you... Anyone want to make a motion to approve the Humane Society contract?
So, move.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, a second. Did you want to read it?
Can I read the title?
Yes.
City Council motion 17-11-1-1, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and the Humane Society of Jefferson County.
Okay, comments or questions on the contract?
Yeah, has everything been satisfactory?
Yes.
We don't have too many choices, do we?
Not really. I mean, we've gone over this multiple times in previous councils. And there's not really a lot of option.
And...
There are some other, you know, there have been some other options provided, but they were, you know, provided the level of service or the type of service that council probably, those councils felt that they wanted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Otherwise, we can vote on it. All right, let's do the vote.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, thank you. Item I, discussion decision on the 2018 Clean Boats, Clean Water, Aquatic Invasive Species Control Grant Program. That is a mouthful. You must get very tired of running around with that on a regular basis. Would we like to...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules to allow Patricia to speak.
I'll second.
We have a second from Mr. Fritsch?
No.
No? Oh, he's been... gonna give you the second. Okay, there we go. All right. Would you have a vote on that, please?
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, good. Thank you for coming tonight. Why don't you tell us what you're hoping we would want to know, okay?
Well, first of all, I'm Patricia Cicero. I'm the Water Resource Management Specialist for the Jefferson County Land and Water Conservation Department. And I really don't have a lot to say to you tonight. I provided a summary that Steve put into the packet to explain some of the results of the work that was done this year by the three employees that we had. Generally, this program is to educate boaters about the laws having to do with the transport of aquatic invasive species. You're not allowed to have any animals or plants come out from the lake, stick on your trailer or boating equipment, and then you're not allowed to go drive on any streets with that, those species on there, no matter what the species is. You also can't have any water taken away from the lake, so live wells have to be drained. And fish have to be dead, which means on ice. So, the boat inspectors educate the boaters about that and a lot of fishermen also. And then take data down. And that's what some of the data is that I provided to you in that handout. We had a really great program this year. I think it's a really great partnership between all the municipalities, the town, the city, and the county. I... the work that I do is considered the match for part of the grant. So, the training that I do and meeting with the inspectors and making sure that they have all the materials necessary, that's all provided in kind to the two grants, one to the city and one to the town. So, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, I've got one. What invasive species has made it to Rock Lake?
So, unfortunately, there's a number of invasive species in Rock Lake. The biggest one that everybody talks about, well, there's two big ones, the zebra mussels also. So, that's an animal. And then there are plants, Eurasian water milfoil, curly leek pond weed. We have a rusty crayfish and the Chinese mystery snail. There are certainly other species that are out there that we don't have yet. And this program helps prevent them from coming to Rock Lake. The program also helps prevent the spread of the species that we do have to other lakes that don't have them. The biggest one that I'm concerned about coming our way is the spiny water flea. It's a tiny little water flea that's in the Madison Lakes. And we get a lot of traffic from the Madison area, people coming from the Madison Lakes. So, I am very concerned about that one making its way here.
Has there been any damage done to the native habitat or species due to the invasion?
You know, there's a lot of repercussions of having invasive species. Some of the common ones with zebra mussels are if people have their boats in the water and their piers in the water, and those zebra mussels attach to them, so they have to take them off. If there are the pipes going in for water removal for the fire hydrants, those can get clogged up with zebra mussels, so that's a public safety issue. There's some areas of the lake where Eurasian water milfoil is crowding out the native species. The... I have heard that the rusty crayfish might have also crowded out the other native crawfish in the lake, but I don't have any data on that. So, it's a multitude of impacts to the lake and not only to the species, but to the public. Zebra mussels, people can be swimming and cut their feet on the shells. So, it is a concern for citizens also.
So, I guess I'll go a little different way here with this. I like the program. I think you're doing great work. The concern I have is, has there been any type of confrontation with our folks that are out there doing these checks? And does their training cover?
Yes. So, the program's been on Rock Lake since 2014. The city has been involved... What did I say? Was it '16 that it was started in the city? So, I always... Well, first of all, with the training, the inspectors get trained at the beginning of the season. And part of my training has to do with communicating with boaters. And I always say, if you get any type of vibe from anybody, that they're not going to be happy to talk to or they're going to be angry or confrontational, don't talk to them. Just walk away, it's not worth it. And so, then I always, throughout the season, I always keep track and touch base with the inspectors. And I think in all of the years that we've done it, maybe there's been two instances where somebody's been extremely rude to the inspectors. What I hear more often is that the public using our launches thank the inspectors for being there and spreading the word about the laws that exist on this issue.
Thank you, that's good to hear.
And I'm really glad that you are telling them not to confront confrontive people, especially in this day and age where everybody seems to have such a short fuse.
Well, especially when you're waiting in line to launch your boat and you're already hot and bothered and just want to get on your way. So, yeah, we go over that in the training. I'm very clear about that point.
They don't act like a lake police officer, do they?
No, they sometimes get questions about regulations. I do give them the pamphlets that explain what the regulations are in the lake so that they can hand them to somebody if they're interested. Also, we have protocols in place in case they do see a violation.
That's what I was wondering.
Yes, so, if it's a violation having to do with the aquatic invasive species rules, they basically nonchalantly take down information. You know, if they've already told the person that they're doing something wrong, then they, you know, that's where they stop. And they have the phone numbers of the local law enforcement and the wardens to call and give them the information that they've taken down on the violation. So, they don't... they aren't involved in writing tickets or anything like that.
Yeah, so...
I'm sorry, Dan.
No, that's fine.
Do you keep statistics of stuff like that?
Well, as far as I know, there might have been one... Now, I'm not sure. I don't think there have been any blatant violations. There's one person who, I don't remember everything about it. It was a couple of years ago. I'm sorry, there might have been one instance, but I don't remember all the... what was involved in it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There might be some opportunity to put in features at the launches to help with the program?
Yes, so, I just came back from an aquatic invasive species coordinator meeting. That is held statewide. It's a partnership between the counties and DNR and UW Extension. We have these meetings every other, or twice a year. And at this last meeting, we talked a lot about decontamination units. So, for certain species, it's beneficial to have a power wash at a high temperature of the boat and the trailer because that will help deter the attachment of any of the species to those materials. Sometimes they're good in certain places. Sometimes there's places that they're not good for. So, for instance, if you're looking at updating any areas such as sandy beach, it might be a good idea to take a look to see if a date decontamination unit would be a good feature to add. It provides an additional service to boaters who are coming and going. And it's good to think about that if you are planning any changes because there's certain infrastructure, such as having piping to get the water there and also making sure that the water is detained and doesn't run off into the lake, thus bringing the species there. So, there's some things to think about if that's a feature that's going to be added. And there are some state contacts with, especially UW Extension, that can provide more information on that if you're interested.
Is there any financial impact with this motion?
For the city?
Yes.
Patricia kind of hit on it. She does all the in-kind part, and then we get reimbursed for everything else. They basically pay all the employees through the town, so it has virtually no impact on us.
Okay.
I think there is a little bit of cash. I'm not involved in that part of the program, but I know that there is. I'm just looking at the money from 2016. I think there was a little bit of money put in. I don't know if it's through the... just through the town or the city puts in some. I don't know.
We had a small cash portion last time.
I think it was around $1,000?
No, it wasn't that much.
Okay.
It might be 50/50 on that amount there, then.
I want to say it was like just a couple hundred dollars.
It's not the line that says local share. That's not us.
The local share, I believe, contains the volunteer hours. So, there's some volunteer in there as well.
So, whatever it is, it's a small amount of money.
It turned out to be that way last time.
Okay, so, okay. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, let's call the question. Thank you for coming.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
I'll read the title and then we need a motion.
We didn't do that yet.
Okay. We just did the... City Council motion 17-11-1-2, directing the city manager to apply to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for a clean... for Clean Boats, Clean Waters Grant.
So...
Make the motion to approve.
Okay. Got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Now, is there any discussion? Keep jumping the gun here on that discussion item. All right. Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Thank you again. Okay, moving on to Item J. Resolution 1741, authorizing the 911 Joint Powers Agreement, Jefferson County Emergency Service. And let me get to that. Do you have that to read?
I can read it too.
Go ahead.
Resolution 17-41, Joint Powers Agreement, County 911 Emergency System.
Good. And I'm still bringing it up, so. Okay. I and computers are having a wonderful time. Well, anyway. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. And we can now go into discussion. Steve, do you have anything to say on this one?
Passed it every year that I've been here, and I assume several years before that. It's just an agreement that when we went to countywide 911 system, the city became a part of it. It just says that we'll provide assistance where needed throughout the county.
Kind of a housekeeping thing?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have questions about it or comments? We want to keep our 911 system. Seems to be working well, saving lives. And so, let's call the question.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Item K, Resolution 1742, Release Letter of Credit, Early Start Grading Permit for Robert Mangan. Okay, let me get.
Would you like me to read the title?
Yes, please.
Resolution 17-42, Mangan Development, Rock Creek Estates Luxury Apartments, Early Start Grading Letter of Credit.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 1742? Then we can discuss it.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 1742.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, we can discuss this. Do you want to tell us anything further, Steve?
You want to, Dan?
I don't want to.
Or Dan?
Basically, the way that that development has started was initiating an early start grading permit. They provided a letter of credit, and the developer provided a letter of credit that was encompassing the anticipated cost of grading the property to prepare for development. That work has been completed. The letter of credit has essentially been replaced at this point with a $1.354 million letter of credit for the next step, infrastructural improvements to the site. And at this point, because the early start grading work is done, and the original LLC, the letter of credit applied specifically to that work, we feel that it's appropriate to release that letter of credit at this point.
And basically replacing it with bigger numbers?
Correct. For the next phase of the development.
For the next phase. Any questions for Dan or Steve?
No problems.
Maybe we won't go that far.
Well, they're moving along. I mean, they've started laying pipe. They've gone through the process to lay sewer and water pipe at this point. The state requirements regarding electrical are under review right now, so they're progressing.
And the grading is all okay?
Yeah, the grading is fine. That's, that's the easiest part of it. They have their water permits from the DNR and the city, and they have their sewer permits from, probably the oddest portion of it is that the site plan and the CSM didn't match up. And so, they haven't got their CSM done yet, so, which is a certified survey map. And so, they had to move some of their buildings around, and so, they're finalizing the details for getting all that done, so then they can submit one total set of plans that we can sign off on. And we were, we've been kind of, they've kind of piecemealed it, you know? It's put them at a disadvantage in negotiations. When you've done the $200,000 worth of site grading and then, you know, $500,000 worth of water work, it's unlikely you're going to back out now because the city manager wants you to have nice-looking buildings. But from that standpoint, they've, they've come a long way and done a relatively decent job. I just, the paperwork is, our understanding is that their engineers are overworked and understaffed, and we'll probably get the final paperwork coming up here around December. The one issue that I put out to the building inspector was no buildings start until there's assigned developers or anything. So, I guess we'll see what happens.
You said that they had to move buildings around because they didn't have the CSM. Is that going to cause problems?
No, it actually made it better.
Oh, well, that's good to hear.
Yeah. When you, when you look at it from our point of view, and you see all these buildings down there, and they don't show the CSM, you look at it and think, well, you know, it's close, but there's no actual detail to it. And finally, you get them to put the detail to it, and instead of having 15-foot setbacks, they have 10-foot setbacks. So, then they have to move the buildings around a little bit, and it actually made the overall layout a little bit better, in my opinion. And, but, you know, it's just those kinds of details that, I don't know if they think they're sliding past you or what. I mean, it's like the landscape plan came in late, but it was, you know, now it's a great plan. The building elevations look better than what they'd originally submitted.
Emergency access will be fine?
Yes, the emergency access has been very critical to everybody involved, so that's at the top of the list. I guess.
Runoff? Any runoff problems?
Oh, no. No, no, no. There won't be any runoff problems here. If you look at it, it all runs to the middle of that site, so they have to figure, you know, so how you get the runoff on it, unless you're talking erosion control, that's a whole different story. But the way they have graded and set, there's no, there's no erosion, no runoff. That's not an issue. And they have a good stormwater plan. We rejected their first one. They came up with a better one.
Do they have, I can't recall. Do they have a pond or retention pond?
Yes. They originally had like a 30-foot-deep pond out there.
Somewhat similar to Brookstone?
Brookstone is about 16, 17 feet deep, so this was a really big pond. But they couldn't get the, they couldn't meet some of the DNR requirements, so they had to change it, so it got a lot shallower. So, it's, it's coming together.
Did we finally get plans out there that have handicapped accessibility?
At the sites?
At the building, on the buildings? Or is that come?
Yes. That's all, that's all there.
That it, we did get that now, because at one time there wasn't, and I want to make sure we do have that.
Yeah, no, they're state-approved plans, so that gets approved at the state level, like the fire stuff.
Okay. Well, basically, this is just letting go of the early money for the next stage money.
Correct.
And it sounds like we have good cooperation, which is what we're, oh, I want to make a statement just to make sure. It is not the city manager who says that we have to have good-looking buildings out there. It's the council and the planning commission.
Actually, it's the city code.
And the, well, and the city code.
Which comes from the planning commission and the city council. But that's what we're working for, is, you know, they submit plans, and it's like, well, that doesn't meet the city code.
Right. But, you know, I don't want the people in Lake Mills get the idea that you personally get to tell people what to put on their buildings, and it's not that at all, and you are just doing your job, carrying out the direction of the code and the council and the planning commission. You don't get to get up in the morning and decide that you want to do something with these buildings, so you don't have that kind of power. And you don't want it either, do you? So, okay, just clarify that. Otherwise, I think we're good. Any other questions or comments?
I might make one comment.
Yep.
In the past, we've stacked letters of credit. Instead of releasing them, they would have, in this case, they would have given us a $1.1 million letter of credit to go along with the $200,000 we already had. They did not want to do that. They opted to issue a full new letter of credit instead of having multiple letters of credit outstanding.
Okay.
So, it was their choice, and we were fine with it. In fact, that's easier to keep track of, and so, we were very comfortable with that.
Well, it doesn't matter to me, so. Okay, good. Thanks for clarifying that. That's a good, good thing to clarify. Call the roll then on that? We have the motion. So, we're good to go.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Moving on to Item L. Ordinance 1183, petition for annexation, Jennifer Jesky. I'll let you read the, do the second reading.
Ordinance 1183, an ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number 01807131223009.
Okay. At our last meeting, we discussed the fact that you were waiting for some stuff to come from the state. Now, did that come in?
Yes, it did.
So, you would like us to move to third reading if we could today?
If, yes, that'd be great if we could do that. The state did send. I don't have it read in front of me. They didn't have any issues. Just wanted to clarify the legal description, which we took care of, and so we can proceed.
Would there be a motion to suspend the rules to go to third?
So moved.
So moved, okay. Do I have a second to go to third reading?
Second.
Okay. So, motion on the floor to suspend the rules to go from the second reading to the third reading tonight. Would you call the roll?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Now, that takes us to the third reading, and we need a motion to approve the ordinance as it is in the third reading. Is there anyone? So moved, Mr. Fritsch?
Second.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 1183. And is there any discussion at this time about this, or are we all okay? Any questions for staff?
So, this is coming in zoned as rural?
RD.
RD.
Rural development.
Okay.
And it's like down the road from Culvers on Elm Street?
They, they desire PB.
Okay.
And that's in the memo, and it's in a mixed-use area, and, so if you read my memo, it said that you need, that they are planning to develop this area as a commercial site, probably a low-density commercial site.
And that's currently scheduled to go to plan commission this month, so.
The change in zone.
The zoning.
Change in zoning, right, right. Or the request.
So, you're okay with that? Okay, call the question.
For formality, I'm just going to read the, read the title for the third reading.
Third reading, right.
Ordinance 1183, an ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number 01807131223009.
Okay. And since there are no other questions or comments, you could call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr., oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. And we can notify Ms. Jesky that she can continue down that road, right? Okay. And that takes us to Item 9, Recommendations for Future Agendas. Any staff have anything, or council members have anything for future agendas?
No, that doesn't have to come.
If not, you can tell us later. If we have nothing to do, we can cancel the meeting. I'm kidding. Probably. Okay. Otherwise, let us know. Then, moving to Item 10, Convenient to Close Session Pursuant to Wisconsin Stats 1985 Print 1 Print G Print. Conferring with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to be involved. And Wisconsin Stats 1985 Print 1 Print C Print. Compensation and performance evaluation data of employees over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. And we need a motion to move into closed session. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, would you like to, there's no discussion on that, is there? Good. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. And we will not be reconvening in here. We'll, we'll do our business, and then we will reconvene, and then adjourn immediately following our reconvene. So, there will be no further council meeting tonight for the public. Okay? Thank you. Oh, and I don't gavel now, do I?